The Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, January 2nd, 2020. Happy New Year, everybody. We have all three someone present, happy. And we have Mr. Coen Secretary and Mr. Leo Martel before you for the benefit of citizens of Dunbar. Thank you, Leo, as always. And both of us gentlemen, we have some minutes. We have two minutes instead of minutes. One was one off the year tonight, is that due next week? This is the budget one we had late here for the other one from December 19th. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for December 19th. As amended. Second, any discussion on those?
I just wanted to say that I didn't read through 2020 because it's December 2019.
Oh, yes. I think you had number 19. But their minutes are correct.
That's okay, the checks were all made out for 2020.
Here are no further discussion, all in favor? As I said, we did have another meeting early in the week, a more budgetary type meeting, and we approved some year-end expenditures and cleaned up some of our year-end budgetary issues. And it was meant to be four quid early next week.
Four quid in covered money.
In covered money. Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment first. And Jeanie, your agenda. So I'm gonna close public comment, get right to the board, and Jeanie, come on up, and so do I, come on up.
I'm here.
Okay, yeah. And for the record, this is the Welfare Director. Jeanie, come on up. No, if you want to just talk, we have your budget right here.
So, you know, so the budget we're requesting for 2020 is pretty flat. The same amount of $5,000 for direct assistance. And recommending for the Salvation Army, the 1,500 that we did last year. And we have had a case come up where we're doing a payout, it will be 800 of the 2,019.
We signed it today. Or this week.
So potentially, we could dip into 2020 for this applicant.
Okay. Questions, gentlemen?
The only thing I spoke with me a little earlier today about was when we brought the Salvation Army down from 2,000 to 1,500, I'm not sure if it's on this page lane or another page, but didn't we put 500 into the church for their food pantry? Do you remember moving that?
I do.
We did move 500 to a local.
But we don't have, I'd have to look at last year's food budget, but what I put in that line, this column seven, is what was part of the total budget.
Yeah, we moved it out, another line item on your budget to the town food pantry, which was the church, and we gave them 500. And I remember they asking when they did receive the check this year.
It was done early in the year.
But that was from prior year's budget. That was from 2000. That was, it done, that was done in December of 2019, and it was distributed to Salvation Army.
I thought myself we would have earmarked for a local food pantry from there on out.
I know that we've had, certain town officials have mentioned that, we have to keep separation of churches.
Right, the thing is, I think we should look at, I think we go to the Dundee, and we discussed, I think we go to the minutes.
I think we should look at, we were moving the money from having the food pantry money go to the church in Grassmere, and we put 500 of it in this church here for the food pantry.
Okay, we've never given to the church, it's always been to Salvation Army.
Grassmere Food Pantry.
It's, it was Salvation Army. I know that specifically, we wrote a check of $300 to the local food pantry for the church here.
I'm sure we did a $500 check.
So this should have been $2,000, because that's where I put.
It would have been, I think it would have been.
I'm thinking unless there's a separate line item on your budget.
No, there isn't. It would be included with that.
Right, I think, I think we need to look at the minutes, how we distributed that.
You remember, we were paying a food pantry out of town, and we decided.
Rather than pay to the out of town one, we paid.
Is it off a different line than I'm, am I thinking of?
No, what you're confusing is, the previous Welfare Director ran the food pantry herself, and it was funded with Salvation Army money. So it, and she had, she had requested of the board to give.
Because we also had Salvation Army money always there, too.
No, that's only recently, three years that we've changed to call it Salvation Army. Before it was other organizations, just in general, donations.
I, I like this, maybe since we're speculating, let's just table that for discussion for now, and let's just, the minutes.
Research the minutes.
I remember signing the check, too, to send over there, so.
This is, this is the budget she's presenting, and we have a chance to modify that, if we can research that, and if we need to, then we should be able to do something.
Okay, she's basing her requested budget based on what we discussed, and having so little background and history of it, she thought it was fair to go with this. But if you want, I think we should change the wording of Salvation Army to something a little bit differently, if there's gonna be more than.
Maybe Salvation Army, less Dunbar and Food Bank, and maybe two organizations in there.
And the Community Action Program.
That is a separate line, they request that from us every year. They're the ones that provide the heat, the food, and I think they provided us.
Those assistants.
Assistants, yeah.
And as I recall, that was, yeah, the amount is significantly more than the amount we pay.
Correct, they just gave us a really detailed report of what they've spent for Dunbar.
If we could just look into that for.
Yeah, yeah.
It may be $500 within that, the $1,000 may be going to Salvation Army, 500 to Dunbar. We, but things, we did discuss that.
Okay.
It's in the minutes.
So maybe we did reduce that down to 1,500 to 1,000.
It was gonna be a split of the 15.
And 500 was going here, but now I do see we just sent that check for 1,500 Salvation Army.
Yeah, but that's been earmarked for Goffstown.
Right.
Food pantry, so she can utilize that in addition to what we.
Yeah, I think the only reason we gave 500, because it was, the church gives it to any Dunbar resident, non-nominational.
We were just a small amount of money, though, that's something we can probably modify.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to bring it up now, because I didn't see a line item for it, so. Jeanie, there's no reflection on your budget? It's something I was, we worked on last year.
You know, I think in a way, in a sense, it's a little bit kinder that have them go to a place they're familiar with going in town, then, I, you know, certainly you're gonna go wherever you have to go to get food.
Correct, yeah.
You know, but when you feel a little more comfortable when you're working within the system, it's in your pounds.
Yeah, and they did say it specifically only for Dunbar residents.
Yeah, and so I, I remember I put in some money in my.
So this line here, this 2019 budget included some for the church.
Yes.
It should have, so we shouldn't have gone 1,000.
Yeah, maybe, you got number 100.
I think it was 1,500.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think it was right. It was, it was an amount higher than that, and we brought it down to 1,500, 5 was supposed to go here, and 1,000.
So if we paid 1,500 to Salvation Army, so be it.
Yeah.
But it should have been only 1,000.
Right, okay.
Yep, so we'll look at that when we come to that final budget.
Yeah.
Jeanie, any last comments that we need to be concerned with?
Now, by doing this, I mean, we did participate in the Apple Region, how would they pass it?
And how did that go?
And that went well.
Okay.
So it served 17 families.
All Dunbar families, yes.
All.
And, okay, great. And I understand there were some lessons learned for future?
Yes.
Okay. Can I say that in a very positive way?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, gentlemen, any last questions?
No, I don't think so, very good job.
Thank you, Jeanie.
And we look forward to a wide year.
Yes.
Would you like us to see you tomorrow, St. John?
That's all right. Well, that's why, all right.
Woody said that he might be running a few minutes late, because he had to make a shipment, and I said that we probably could get one of the two other individuals.
Well, I'm waiting, can I go through some mailbox items, gentlemen?
Sure, sure.
Okay, just, we have a status report on the, from the planning and zoning. If recall, last week I was talking about a, if you read the first item, I was talking about that last week, about in the minutes, it's about the, used to be.
It's actually Building Department Report, right?
Buildings, building and planning, excuse me, that's on it. That's for information only. And we had another follow-up meeting today, work continues in progress on getting in a situation, well, some of the issues resolved, especially in item one, so be aware of that. I don't want to say the names, it's not appropriate at this time. Okay, we have a, this is a Falcon Heights Properties, is on the four lot subdivision, and it was just the notice, it was approval of the subdivision. This is one on 13 right up here, was approved, the planning and all. We have a thank you note from one of our town employees for the gift cards, just taking an opportunity to read that. We have a board of selectmen, we contributed to the, when Ed Valeris passed, we contributed some money for the, as a donation, in his name, for the restoration of the Jameson Cave, and it's a thank you note sent from them. And I just want to point out, that was paid out of our own pockets, gentlemen. We have a few, remember I gave you some homework earlier? I came up with one word change concerning the bereavement leave section, Dave, you made the, one of the talk about change? And I made one word change. And if you see the word change I made to the homework, it's, that will, but may authorize. I'll give you, I'll give you an example, but I don't want to do it in public, where we would not necessarily authorize it in all cases.
I don't think we made a better wording anymore.
Yeah, it gives us some attitude. Bobby, I'll share the word change, but basically one word, a change from will, where it's old, to may. And so it gives us a little attitude.
I should do.
Otherwise, it should have been shall.
And this is a, talk about this one, this is from the, from you.
Which one is that?
This is a personal amendment for medical plan.
Yeah.
This is basically, essentially making the change that we made earlier in November, when we adopted.
Yeah.
Bob, you were gonna help address this tonight, this is, remember we approved only one exception for board of selectmen, and we wanted to talk to chief about the, what's his long-term plan of undermining the.
Well, that might be a long-term plan right there. That might be the rate he set, now you're gonna start to, I'm talking about that a little bit, is if we start modifying plans that even have another community that they're gonna wanna go into, that's gonna pay a little bit less, so we have, now we set what the rate is if they're using a cruiser, we set the administrative rate.
Yeah.
And so if we're gonna give, this is extra duty in another town besides that, but it's extra duty. So if they're gonna negotiate the rate, they may wanna take a hit, just like the town would take a, you know.
Who's the employee?
No, the employer.
The vendor, the person that we'd be doing service for.
No, the person taking the hit would be the town officer that's going to work that extra duty. You know, the chief would like to see them get their rate, and it's all well and good, but we add them to the taxpayer also. And it may not be a lot of money, but the fact is, once you start playing with a rate, they're gonna play with a rate whenever they see an opportunity, and it's always gonna be that we compromise the rate that the town gets either for the cruiser or administrative to keep the rate the same for the officer.
As, as currently, while, the thing is, we made an exception, if we go back and start changing every one of them, we're undermining the vote of that public hearing we had, and the will of the public, because we, the public agreed with us, because it would be a public hearing.
And so that's why I think, you know, when they're looking at making a modification, I think if we're gonna agree to it, they shouldn't be splitting the difference. You know, this is, this is gonna be, I understand, as for St. Haze, but they could have a few events throughout the year.
Correct. And the thing is, I think it's, I think that he came back, and it's more to understand that he thought this was gonna be a change for the whole year, and that's not what we approved, we, one exception.
That's not what it says, though, it says there for the following year.
Right, but we're not approving that.
Just for that one job.
No, that says that they're gonna have events throughout the year.
I thought it was just for the St. Haze job for the year, so the St. Haze project for the.
Right, could be three.
Could be, could be a work.
Or six, could be.
Well, that's the one that's presented to you, down the road, where decides, and they say, hey, St. Haze only pays 65.
Yeah.
Pay 65. He's gonna come back to us and say, what can we do for where? Can we take a hit on the administrator or on the cruiser? So my point is.
I like to, I like to think when he acts on this for now, and wait till the chief comes in to read here.
Yes, I do, I show him.
One, one exception.
No, but I hadn't forwarded it to you, I told you guys that, that I read it after the plan, and I said, whoa.
So let's call the chief, and then explain it.
Right.
And then they can explain.
But you were proving was not what he was asking, so I, so I put a stop to it.
Okay.
You know, I understand it's not a large amount of money, but again, you're gonna have people in town that are gonna think that, you know, we're giving up something, and where it's costing us more to provide that.
Now, it's just St. Haze, and Congress will be hosting the debates for the upcoming year.
Right.
So the one-time exception is the debates.
Right.
Right?
How many debates do you have, though, where we?
They could have two or three.
Yeah, so you guys.
So the one-time exception is just these debates, nothing else, no other jobs, nothing else at St. Haze.
But I think Bob, what Bob is saying is, it potentially will set that precedent.
Exactly.
We made a motion on this.
Right, but the motion, the motion was, if we go back in the minutes, it was basically one exception, and the thing is, we didn't really read into the.
Well, I read it to be just the debates.
More than one, but it was the one.
Just that, that one event, the debates, if there's three, there's three, if there's one, there's one.
Okay.
If there's two, there's two, but it was just the debates.
Right. Why do you want?
No other function at St. Haze, as far as I can tell there.
You want, okay. How come debates are not coming election year?
Because sometimes they have a primary debate, then the actual election debate.
Right.
So sometimes it's at least.
Oh, sure, but the thing is, I think in the.
They might have about four officers.
In the, in the spirit of clarity, obviously, I, I mistook it for only one, one single event, I think, Bob, did you look at it one single event, too?
I, I figured it was.
So we're, I think, is we looked, interpreted incorrectly, and I think, I'll admit I interpreted it correctly as being only one event, so if it was for the whole year, we don't know how many they're gonna be over the year, because there are always a lot of new ones, and so this could go on, and it could set a bad precedent, so.
That's, that's my point, is that you don't know what this could lead into. This is, and that could be St. Haze rate that they reimburse that.
Town.
You know, so what happens is, you may have another community that says, hey, you know, I don't know why we're paying that much, then why don't we just charge this rate? And so they'll come back to us, I would imagine, if they wanna do.
I, I'd like to have, I'd like to ask the chief to come in and talk to us about this before we're making a decision. Is that fair enough?
The answer was open.
So, and since we really haven't put that out, we did vote on it, but I think, I'd like to, we send that vote, and.
We'll send them an email, and state that Henry reading this, we realize that it may be more than one event, and we approve one event in that motion.
Okay.
So if he was looking for more than one event.
He should be coming and come back and find us.
And just tell him that Henry read again. It looks like there may be more than one event.
And maybe, while, if he really, he probably needs a chat with us, Bob.
He took graduation, too.
Oh, yeah, and there's, I mean, there's all sorts of events there, but he didn't just ask for the debates on there, but. Okay, that's a work in progress, we'll leave it at that, okay, Jeanie?
Again, that's for, for now, that's what he's asking for. We don't know if that could turn into future things anywhere else, you know, that's my concern.
Okay, so, no, Bob, so, no, Dave, and we'll, we'll have chief come in and discuss it with us. All right, next item is recycling, it's gonna cost us one recycle, as always.
Seventy-five cents more per tire for passing a tire.
I thought you were gonna keep a flat rate for some of this.
Okay.
Woody didn't get a copy of that.
Okay, Inspector, thank you. We have a courtesy copy, since we're in a butter, but it seems like Perkatory Pond is looking for some subdivisions, it's gonna be going for the planning board this month. Looks like he's gonna try to recruit some, some dollars for the Nice Road Eagle. Okay, gentlemen, already talked about this, this is, I believe, I want you to prepare a housekeeping warrant for elected versus appointed position for the, for the Wilbur Director. Now, that's something we discussed.
You got two piles going, yeah.
That's for her. And never consult first, come on, I'm not taking any, I can be out of that. Let us there building for your, for your reading. All right, we have, when Woody comes in, we may talk about that later on. And I am out of mailbox items. I just wanna talk about one email, we talked to Dana LaBourne, leaned in on email, and did you, I hope you all had a chance to read the details. I thought it was good response, but I think I was disappointed with the performance of the company to date.
Didn't I put that in your?
It wasn't in my, it was not in my inbox.
I didn't get the chance to read that.
You did not? I think it's a really well.
Well, well worth from the company, from the owner of the company. Dressed up concerns, Dana, I immediately reached out to him, but again, I'm disappointed because the timeline, he missed the timeline, and.
It's, it only affects him.
Right, he's, he's cognizant of that, he's gonna deliver.
I'm glad they at least finishing the project up, because we had other projects where timeline never met, and the company went under, and, you know, we were stuck, so.
That's kind of fortunate, the main salesman we were dealing with, basically, is normal works for the company, and so it seems like this is.
Hands are growing, hands.
Yeah.
Here, obviously.
So, but the email was well-written, and as, I, I want you to read it, and I think it was well-received, and so I'm, I'm gonna give him the benefit of the doubt cautiously. The fact he answered, Dana, and the thing is, I'm trying to work through Dana, has a point of contact on that.
But his contract with us doesn't change at all as to what we're gonna receive, for the money we're gonna spend. He's the one that can't say yet, because they're dropping from 30% down to 27% this next year, so he thinks, you know, that reimbursement that he will get. Which tells you that evidently there's some money to be made.
Oh, yeah. Next week, Leo.
Can I ask you?
Sure, Leo, since we're so crowded tonight. We thought he was, he thought he was.
Yeah, he's supposed to, he said, well, he said in that email that he would be coming to it.
Because I was just curious if we're gonna get back, if we're gonna be serious about the reason.
The email? Yes. The thing is, I, in fact, David, you wanna read it, I don't mind, for the record, because this is of interest to many of the public members.
Hi, Dana, my full crew will be outs, will be outside on-site today at the transfer station. As you know, this project did not go as smooth as planned, but I see no reason that we should not be able to finish by the end of next week, and it will perform as promised, as far as the ITC and the state rebate that is on GSS, not on the town of Dunbar, and would not affect our agreed terms. The ITC is not affected due to the safe harbor, nor does it affect the state rebate. Like I mentioned weeks back, as soon as the project is complete, I'm going to write a letter to the town and answer any questions in person in reference to the build and complications. I do appreciate the town's patience and give my personal guarantee that this system will meet all expectations. Thank you. Alan Compton.
Who is that? This week or next week?
This week.
That just came a couple days ago, so it's next week.
So we can know what's going on.
Exactly, and I think that's good for the public to hear that, and thank you, David.
You're welcome.
We'll give this, so she can. Then, get that paragraph off. We have. Karen's?
Yes.
Okay, I was just gonna, stop talking about you.
No.
You have your own agenda.
Good.
I'm going out of order, because our, our transportation managers are on a run, so I think is, if you wanna talk to us, I think is, I'm gonna give you the floor, are you ready to speak?
Absolutely.
Okay, come on up, if you want, you don't have to speak, you don't have to yell at us, we don't have to yell at you.
Can I have a cheer in front of me?
Sure, and just state your name and address.
Gary Boss, 62, Little Hopkins Ten Road.
Okay.
Dunbar. And I appreciate the short notice giving me in to talk to the selectmen, I know your time's valuable, appreciate it. The, the matter I wanted to discuss with you is the tax credit benefit for veterans. I understand that the capital down here has passed a new bill that raises the limits of that, and I'd like to discuss you as far as raising the limits here in town. I know a small town has its impact, whenever you cut anybody's funds out of the pot, but I don't think the impact would be that great. So basically, if it was raised up to the maximum, for 113 vets, it would be $22,600. And for the four 100% disabled vets, it would be 8,000 additional, for a total of 31,000. I'm not sure how big the tax population is in Dunbar.
Dana, just so I understand, 113 vets.
Yes.
At 22,600.
I think that was from old last year, this one here that I just ran.
We have 109 regular veterans.
109, I think you have on it.
And there's four at 100% disabled.
I have five.
We're up to five now, yeah.
So, so there's 109, Mike, and five, what's that, a full?
That's every then amount versus, and this amount, this is.
100 per month. So 109 times 500, and, you know, there's 14.
That's, that's, and the thing is, an increase would make it more.
That's a 14, I guess.
14, yes.
Now, what amounts are you proposing, I guess, is what?
Well, you know, initially, I was going to get a petition and bring this in front of the, the town meeting.
You may still have to do that.
Oh, I do.
You may still have to do that.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Okay.
As I got to thinking about it, I didn't think it was something that should be voted on by the town.
It has to be.
Well.
Okay. It has to be, but the state, the state law is specific, it has to be adopted by the town, and when something's adopted like that, it's adopted at the legislative body, which are voters.
See, you understand, we work for the townspeople, pretty much, and even our entire budget goes in front of the voters during town meeting, and that all gets voted on that night, so our entire budget is broken down.
That's the tax rate, everything gets, I mean, we set it, and we recommend it or not recommend it, and it's set by the town, we call the legislative body, which are voters.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. I thought because of the, the Senate down here passed the bill, that you guys had the option of whether or not to.
We can recommend or not recommend, or be ambivalent with the process, but that's only a recommendation, is a recommendation, that is, we recommend lots of stuff, and it gets turned down by voters, and that's, it's a voter, it's part of the voters.
But anyway, what were your dollar amounts that you were thinking about?
Um, you know, I haven't been thinking about it yet, I was, you know, I know what the maximum is, I know you guys have the option of whatever you think is fair for the town.
What is the maximum, I do know?
Well, 750, $750, and up to $4,000 for disabled veterans. And the thing is, I couldn't find any community in New Hampshire which was offering the maximum of $4,000. And I did, I was only looking at about 12 towns quickly, and I'll give you an example of Concord, in contrast with us, a big city, which they have a big tax base, a lot of, lot of commercial tax base, which we don't have minimal of anything, it's all your fellow residents, but they give a, for disabled, they give $2,000 tax rate, 50% of what is authorized, and they, they cut the, the regular veterans' tax rate to 500 to 150, into 150. So they, they were like more than double what Concord gives, but we don't give as much for the DAB, the disabled veterans. That was just Concord. Um, Webster, a smaller community is, was basically, is essentially us. They give 500 and 200 and 2,000 for the disabled. And Merrimack, uh, Merrimack, no, does give 4,000. That's an exception. I did find one, 4,000. And they give 500. Merrimack is a wealthy community compared to us. And Wilton, Wilton gives 350 versus our 500, yet they give 4,000 for the disabled. So there's some, there's a little bit of mixture there. Bow is almost identical to us, but they give 2,000 and 500.
How long ago did this increase by the state happen?
About a year and a half ago.
That's actually at the bottom of the hour you're saying.
It looks like it was last year.
Last year. I think it was, uh.
The legislature was talking about a year and a half ago.
I was just wondering if towns had time to have their town meetings get on it.
Yes, they have. In a sense, I realize that there's three categories now. There's a, um, there's a wartime vet, there's an all vet credit. And the all vet credit is what was enabled. The all vet credit is which facilitates anyone who served 90 days to get money. And some towns are just completely ignoring that completely. And that I don't understand at all, where some towns give equal credit for a wartime vet versus a regular vet who served something like 90 days. So there's a lot of herding. And my opinion, I think the town right now is very generous. And if we had a bigger, if we were a wealthy town, in a sense, wealthy in the sense that I had commercial activities fulfilling like half our tax base, I would say, I would jump for joy and say, yeah, let's, let's, let's take, let's add, get the maximum. But the problem is, when you're asking for dollars, we have such a tight budget right now. We, we, we give you the credit and who's paying for the credit? Your neighbors are. It's not, it's not, there's no commercial industry. It's your neighbors. And that's my concern.
You did the calculation of the tax burden?
I did, I did, I did. I just did a quick talk, the difference and the thing is, um, just.
Would you do it if we did max?
No, if we did, if we did max, it'd go $40,000 and that would add, um, to, to just the residents, that would add 13 cents per valuation of $1,000. And let's say on a $300,000 home in town, that's an extra $39 that you're asking each neighbor to pay you for, to pay your taxes.
Please, please understand that I'm not looking at this as a benefit, but as, as an appreciation.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I do too. I, believe me, I've been 27 years there and I'm with you. And the thing is, when I came into this town, I, I settled this town, not because of the, the, I got a credit. And that was a surprise to me. I was like pleasantly surprised. But the thing is, I'm not asking for more. I, I was just grateful that that mattered. And we, they greatly expanded it following the war in 2007. Um, and they expanded to take care of the veterans following the, uh, the Gulf War. And I think it was, it was a pittance back then. Now it's been expanded whereas that shows appreciation for the wartime veterans. Going all the way back to Vietnam and then some.
Well, please don't think that I'm asking for this as a.
No, but the thing is, if, if you seriously, if you really, your heart's into it, the thing is, my advice would be, would be that you get a petition warrant. Lena is prepared. I directed Lena and Lena has directed me in the sense that she said, I'm already ready. She's ready with the paperwork. If, if you wanna pursue a warrant article, but I think the timing is, it's critical. But the thing is, it's not us that's gonna approve it. It's gonna be the legislative body. We may give an opinion one way or the other, but that's all we have is an opinion. It's the legislative body, your fellow voters, your fellow citizens who are gonna make the decision.
Okay, comment, comment that you made about you feel the town is already generous.
I do.
Is generous come into consideration for a, an appreciation? Because that's what all this stuff is about. That's what the yellow stickers are on the cars for. That's what Veterans Day is for. That's what, you know, all this stuff is appreciated. It's not, look how generous we are. Look how much generous this town is in this town.
No, but the thing is, I put the perspective, if they gave me a dollar, I'd be happy. As, as if it was just appreciation. It's not the amount that I'm looking for.
And don't think I'm not grateful for what, what the town is giving me.
And that's the way I feel.
But how appreciative is the town towards veterans?
I think very appreciative. And the thing is, I mean, we could, I mean, just to look what they've done with the, uh, the Reeds Across Dunbar, for example. We had a significant volunteer effort, just to put Reeds on veterans' grade school and back hundreds of years. And the thing is, they reached out and they did a great job. And the thing is, that's one example. And Memorial Day, we have a great ceremony for them and they, the school actually embraces the veterans with a, I haven't seen you there. You need to get out there. There's a veterans breakfast. They, they actually, they take the moment to be, to educate the children. And the thing is, the upcoming generation of what Veterans Day is for in November 11. They have a breakfast, they talk about what service they did, and they recognize all the individual people show up while the veterans are there. I think it's a fantastic opportunity. It's educational and thankful. And every, you, you basically get to shake every little child's hand as it goes through. They, they thank you. And it's almost funny, they say they're almost doing it out of rote. But the thing is, they go through every veteran and their contribution to what they've done. So I think this town is very appreciative. And, and how much does that cost? It's not a value. It's, to me, just have a child come up to you and say thank you means a heck of a lot more to me than, than raising it up.
Oh, absolutely. But I don't, again, I don't know what the voter base is for the town. I know there's 117 veterans that we're talking about.
We're 2,700 population. That's the population. We're only at 1,444 ourselves that are taxable.
But on a percentage basis, veterans versus rest of the townspeople, how many anniversaries do they miss? How many kids births did they miss? How many injuries did they suffer?
There's, there's no argument.
The list of sacrifices, even though we signed up for the job voluntarily, most of us.
Totally agree, totally agree.
There was a lot of things that happened to me that I didn't sign up for.
Absolutely. And so the thing is, that's why I, I see it in your heart. I see some passion there. I'd say, work with Lena, get your petition warrant and see where the voters, where the wind is blowing.
Okay. Is it possible to get a feel out of selectmen?
Thing is, I'm, 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 I look at, I like, I'm a, I'm a bad person in comparison. I was good. There's a gentleman behind me with the transfer station. He's always asking me for a raise. But the thing is, what I do is I look at other towns and I don't always say no to them because I say we paid well. He's gonna come and ask me for a raise tonight, but the thing is, uh, I look at comparison. What are we doing as a general population? Are we cheap? Are we too expensive? Are we poor? Are we poor and give nothing? Or are we so wealthy that we can't give anything? I, I, I did just a cross section before and did a correction, I did a quick cross section tonight, today. And the thing is, I think we're pretty generous right now. I think we're, I'm pretty happy with it. And so I, I'm, I'm, I think this, what we're doing is fine. The only question I have is, the one thing we haven't embraced is the all veteran status. Do you understand what that one is?
Yes.
We have not embraced all veteran status. And, um, I'm only recognizing at this point the wartime veterans and disabled veterans. Someone who just signs up for 90 days, I don't see how, you know, he gets.
Well, what if you weren't a wartime veteran, but you were a veteran for your full term?
You still, you have to be, right now, there's three categories thing. There's a disabled veterans category, there's a wartime veterans category, and then there's an all-time veterans category. An all-time means any, any, anyone who serves a minimum of 90 days and not a wartime goes in that category.
So if you were a veteran in this town and you happen not to have hit a war?
Then right now, you're not, you're getting a big zero.
I don't think a lot of.
Well, that's why the, 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 the towns are mixed on that. Half the towns are saying yes, half the towns are saying no. The thing is, but the legislature gave the ability to towns to make their own decision. They didn't, they didn't, which is nice about the legislature, they didn't shove it down our throats. They gave it our choice.
So up till last year, it was only wartime veterans.
Correct. And disabled.
Regular and.
Disabled. But you're saying regular, he's saying wartime.
Well, there's three categories now. They call all-time veteran, all, all veterans versus wartime veterans.
But there again, if you think that guy was not a wartime veteran, but he signed on line, he served his country.
You're, you're preaching to the choir. I'm with you.
Yeah, why leave him out?
But the thing is, firstly, I don't take a care for those people who sign up for 90 days and then they say, have a nice day and.
Yeah, fucking 90 days, he could have put.
Great, he could have put. But the thing is, they don't make the distinction.
I think, I think that's.
This was brought to, uh, the former BFW, head of BFW in town to look into. And he came back to me and told me that it would be a significant number that would change, that even he wasn't in support of that.
Do we know how many veterans we have that were not a wartime veteran?
I don't, but.
That's not enough.
That person, that person did.
If I could throw something after that.
Sure.
All the National Guard, the reserves, all those people that served, they didn't sign up to go to war. 90% of them signed up for college education and one weekend a month, but not too many of them didn't get on the bus when they were told to.
Although I did have one, with the prison.
There's always one or two. Is there, is there a way we can find that amount of those people out there?
I think, well, Garry McCubbin, he, he was in charge of the list of veterans and then the events and.
Who do we have monitoring that veteran list then?
There is.
So somebody that came to this town and was a veteran and didn't ask for the discount on their tax and didn't know we offered it, wouldn't get it.
It's pretty, but it's, it's pretty much well advertised on any veterans website. They include the state websites. It's, it's really plastered quite well.
But in order, in order to pass the all veterans, we have to go through the legislative body. We have to put it on.
And that, that's something we could adopt.
I'm not worried about that so much. I wanted to get someplace where you get accurate numbers of how many veterans live in our town and how many wartime veterans so that we can make a decision as a select body without just hearsay.
Yeah. Bob, you had mentioned that if you brought it up at the end of the meeting to have a survey, remember you might bring it up at town meeting? But sometimes at the end of town meeting, people just get up and leave and there's not enough.
I think, I think maybe in the town report or something, we've gotta be able to get accurate amount of veterans in this town somewhere through the state, I would imagine, would be able to tell us.
Yeah, the state has no bearing on that. It's, it'd be, anyone, I have one veteran in town. I won't say his name, but it doesn't want anything to do with the service. Wouldn't accept the money. Wouldn't even take the money.
And I tell every one of those people I run into, if you have a disability, put in a claim. If you don't want the money, get the money and donate it to veterans organizations that will help other veterans.
We have another second question, we've got a comment.
We're, we're going to have a couple of veterans or so at the meetings signing up.
We could, we could, we could probably approach it this year and just give a, get which way the wind is blowing as far as getting a snapshot of where the community is. The problem is town meetings, as we said, we get 1,300. Do we ever get 1,300 to come out the?
We're lucky if we get 200.
So that'd be, it'd be a cross section snapshot we get at the meeting.
Can I ask Lena if you could call our municipal association and see if there's a way through the state or through them that we can find out accurate numbers so that we at least can do the math properly and decide, you know, which way we'd like to head and support if we want to leave a status quo.
Because I, right now, I know for a fact we have 109 regular.
Right, because those are participating.
Correct.
But now if we're, if we're talking about doing the math on those other numbers.
All credit, all veterans.
Yeah, all veterans. I'd like to know the, right now, we're all just talking hearsay. We don't know how many is. We know it's gonna be more, but we don't know how many.
And I would say Garry McCubbin could only document what he knew about veterans. I don't think he could go into the weeds and figure out who all of the veterans.
And the thing is, I just wonder if there's no accurate way, at least we've done our due diligence and at least asked the municipal association to see if there's any way that we could get that number.
Well, if you're talking about a year's timeframe, to see which way the wind blows and get the information and all that stuff together. I hate to throw this out there because when there's overworked as it is, I think, but. Everybody ready to shoot their car? It could just be a question that's, that's asked when you come, when you come through to get your license.
It would have to be a wartime veteran discount over there.
What do you?
All veterans get discounts on their registration?
No, you know what? We're just sending out the notice so they have a little line that says, are you a veteran? So that she can get a tally at the end of the year and just.
Unless you're 100% disabled.
But even on your veterans, so.
Okay.
Even as a disabled vet and, and you don't pay for the license on one car, it's not for them to get it registered.
Right.
So how would Linda know if you're a veteran if you didn't state to her that?
It would have to be a question. It'd have to be a question.
That's what I'm saying. Include that right on. The thing, are you a veteran? So they could let her know.
Yes.
It doesn't have to do with.
They don't have answers.
Just so that she has an idea and maybe that you would.
Can we ask that question?
Right, because.
Well, it's almost like asking your race. You might not.
If you, if we call, in the last, last like board, I, I attempted to do that with, through the tax bill.
She's here. Nobody ask him to see if she knows. I'm sure that they discussed this.
I wanted to get it done through the tax bill. And I think the problem is we're restricted by what can go in the tax bill to be accepted.
Yeah, we tried to do the questionnaire through our tax bill.
Well, let's try that. But we could also ask that same question with municipal association.
We did, for the.
Not the tax bill.
Okay, no, but this is, we're talking about registration.
Right, so we can ask the municipal association that question as well.
And we wanna get an accurate count, so.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, when you present something to the voters, voters wanna know, how's it gonna hit my wallet?
They're voters, us too.
Yeah, if you don't, well, we're voters.
I hate talking to voters.
We're voters too. But the thing is, that's what the voters wanna know. The thing is, they wanna know, uh, how it's gonna hit my tax, my tax bill. And the thing is, if it's gonna be a major hit, a big hit, especially if we add, if we go, if we start embracing that all veterans. And as you said, uh, my, my philosophy there was, nobody sign up. You may be lucky, may never go to war, but you may, you're still there and you can be called the next day.
Absolutely.
And that's where I agree with you. But the thing is, at the same time, you can't ask someone to vote on something up at all with you.
Agreed. But one other thing that you were talking, you mentioned earlier about what amount, I was thinking about, whatever the amount, if there's any amount decided upon through, it could always be phased in over time.
Right, in fact, some, we have to vote on our, our budget yearly. So if we determined our amount, that would go into our budget and get approved by the townspeople at voting time, so.
Do you think Fred Millen would know?
No.
Okay, Lena said, does she, would you have a problem leaving a questionnaire on her desktop when they come in to register?
We can start that effective this week, during the calendar year.
Well, let's see if there's another way to get the list other than doing that because that's still not gonna be an accurate list because some people are gonna answer it, some people are not, so it's not accurate.
Well.
Do you, you have to.
It's not an accurate number, which are maximum liability to the town.
That, I agree with you, but the thing is.
And that number just. By a volunteer list, it's not gonna, you're not gonna get it. As he stated, there's some people that don't take it.
Well, the thing is, the only advantage of signing up and saying yes, because it may lead to additional benefits for veterans, that'd be the motivation to answer the question. Thing is, you're gonna have some people that say, you know, I went up to do with the war, I don't wanna talk about it at all, and my service is, is done, I'm not talking about it. Some people are like that. And I've met them in this town. They don't wanna talk about it. And I respect that. Um, so, and they're not gonna be the ones coming up to sign up. Um, but the thing is, if someone is, is, you're counting like, we're doing this surveys to ascertain, uh, financial impact and potential veterans benefits to the town number and hey, I might be signed for that. And I might, I'm a veteran and put their name on there and sign that with Linda.
Without an accurate number, I'd have trouble.
Well, that'd be more, this, the state does not keep the rolls, does not keep a tab on me that I'm a veteran. It's like a gun owner. Who keeps tabs on the people that are gun owners? They don't. It's, it's a.
I'm pretty sure you are a veteran.
Right.
Yeah, Veterans Administration, but that's what it is.
Google yourself, you're probably.
I personally would be very suspicious of an individual that would not, I'm not talking about discussing his wartime.
Sure. It, it, as, as I said, it's.
What he did, but how could he possibly be against saying some, yes, I served in the military and 90 days? I don't understand.
I can't see it currently, but after watching some shows of people coming back from Vietnam, I can understand where some people might not have.
Oh, at that time, absolutely.
I'd say some data is worth no data. So I, I think we can talk to Linda about doing that. We have consensus with that, Bob? Do you please get Linda to ask that?
Well, you need to start in some direction to get.
I think we should have the municipal association to make sure we can do that through Linda first before we go ahead and implement it.
But she's, she's offering putting on her counter, not through the mail.
I know, and I just wanna make sure that that's something that, uh, we should do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I agree. Before we implement, we're, we're on agreement there.
But I, I experienced some of that, that time period when it wasn't a good thing to tell anybody you're a veteran.
Right.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping we changed 100% away from that, but I'm not always so sure.
But we're in a different, different era now. I mean, it's, it's nice when people come and say thank you.
Amen to that.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
We have another question.
And, uh, I'm with Lena. When you bring up a topic, ask me, are you a veteran?
True.
Office, we didn't know, you know?
Well, it, it could be a multifactorial approach. It doesn't have to be one single approach.
Right, but we know we help.
Get some numbers. All right. The thing is, um, and then we could have something, it's, if you roll in the way to you, we, we, we can make a concerted effort to get some data.
You know, absolutely.
Looking for that, giving the breakdown for three different.
Well, right now, right now, I would say of the people who want the credit, the thing is, their credit is well advertised, as I found out. Uh, this is the wartime credit.
Right, but when you're in there, it says, yes, I'm a veteran.
You need to identify all three. Are you?
Oh, no, no.
So you're gonna lump them all in one, you know?
Right, the thing is, um, you have to apply for it. It's gotta be verified.
And so if you're looking for that number here.
Right. I like to think, I like to think people are honest.
Okay, that's not my point. If they say, yes, I'm a veteran, now you, okay, there's another one.
You don't know which.
Which category they fit in.
Right, the same point. We can, we can, we can.
We're worth changing the dollar, Bob.
We're not, of course. So like I said, you're gonna lump them all in one and that's gonna make a big difference.
Yep, that's gonna be wrong. Well, we can say three type, we have three categories. We could ask, we could actually ask. The thing is, war, veterans know when, if they're disabled or not.
Good question.
Sure.
How do, how do we verify if they're wartime veterans?
Basically, after there's, there's a form called DD4214. They have to supply it, they have, there's a state form they have to fill out, sign. sign.
And their form is state.
The assessor, my office.
And it goes to the state for, uh.
No, it's all internal, my assessor.
The DD two fourteen is.
Where does that person do to get that information?
They come to my office, pick up the two, uh, PA twenty nine.
When you're discharged from the service, you have a DD two fourteen, it's, it's a document that.
Who verifies it?
The assessor does.
Where does he go to do it?
He does it right there in our office.
Who is he called to do it?
And if I, if I get a new resident that just moved to town, he moved from Manchester, he qualifies as a state minimum time carry, living in the town, and, uh, DD two fourteen.
No, you're not following my question, where does he go, who does he call to verify it?
Who puts the thumb up?
He, he, he presents a document. He works on the DD two fourteen.
Right, how does he verify the guy's telling the truth?
It says right on there, this criteria by the twenty, PA twenty nine, you have to have, you have to have an honorable discharge and medals.
DD two two is official.
And those are the pieces, he doesn't question what's on the form, the form is a, a, a formal document that the veteran has to give to us, and then we.
So you have a document as a veteran that you hand a copy?
Yes, with PA twenty nine.
Okay, so he hasn't called the state or anyone?
No, the, the DD two fourteen is a source document.
Yeah, and you only get that when you're honorable discharged.
And you don't, if you lose it, you're up by the creek a little bit, we agree with you.
Absolutely.
You don't lose those things.
Okay. That's what I need to understand, way to verify, not the process.
Okay.
The DD two fourteen is the source document.
Okay, and if there's, if there's a disability of a hundred percent, who's the letter that goes with that?
A doctor's letter.
And it's, and it's dated yearly too, I think it's a VA, we send them a letter on a yearly basis that verifies, uh, how much disability you have.
So most likely the government knows where the veterans are, but most likely the state doesn't know.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know how.
And not even one goes to the VA?
There's some people that are just, that's some bad words they're saying to VA too.
Right, it, it was a, it does not always go with.
Maybe the municipal association knows that some government agency that we can call for us to work. Because like Leo said, until you get the categories right, we can't do the math right here.
Yeah, but the thing is, each veteran will be able, at least, I think in a survey, would now, could check off category one, two, or three, and I could help with that.
Yeah.
Except for the ones that don't want to be named.
Right, and the thing is, to me, I don't, if they don't, they don't want to be named, they're not gonna get the money anyway, so that's good. And so I'm looking at those people who might be interested, so we can get a head count, so how would it impact us, impact the town financially?
Sure.
And that would be the, where we're going there.
But about waiting for a year, back to the beginning, I'm grateful for what the town's given, so, it takes a year or five years.
The thing is, I just, the thing is, uh, my, my big, uh, push when I first came on the board was to try to get, I wanted to see how much interest there was out there for the all veterans tax credit. One voter expressed interest to me, one voter at all, and, uh, because I was shot down, uh, by, by the previous board, uh, by the chair. And it was, it was too hard to do a category.
Well, now you're the show, you could knock that out. I hear the decision.
It's a decision by three, not, not one, and the thing is, and I'm not gonna denigrate, it, it is, it is difficult, there is no easy solution here, because there's no, the state does not keep rolls on anybody, I guess I hope not, and, uh, but I think we could, we could start, at least do an internal number and collection of data and go from there, can I have the three categories?
I don't know what question, does Lee have your email?
I don't know if we're gonna.
The reason why, maybe after we research some of this and see if there is any answers that we can get from either the government or the state, we can either have you back in, or Lee could send you an email and update you what we at least find.
Sure. But, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to see you, if nothing, if we do pursue with a, a survey, at least we could be here discussing before the next town meeting of how we're gonna, which way we're gonna go, now that we have data. The key thing, the thing is, with, with, with all fairness to Dave who's representing voters, Leo who's speaking as a personal citizen, you, you just can't vote on something that's so nebulous, and I think is, uh.
And I'm not a veteran, but my dad was, and I do have a lot of appreciation for veterans, so. Thank you, I would like to look into it further and see, see what our total liability as a town would be.
And then, I think is, we just can't do it live.
Understand, I don't know whether they do or not, I don't know whether the VA has any demographics as far as where the veterans are living here in the state.
I wonder if that falls under the confidentiality or the privacy laws where.
It would just be a number, so it wouldn't be a.
But the thing is, I like the idea of just.
Oh, okay, do you, is that something you can check into?
Yeah, I can check into it, I don't know, I can give you a point of contact if they didn't have it.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
And I would think that, and this association would run into this in some of these other towns before, but it can't be the first time this has happened, but.
Now, if the VA does have that, it wouldn't be a hundred percent accurate because of people coming and going, coming and going, and.
It's like a voter checklist, you don't know if they moved downtown until you update your list, but.
Well, we can try from a couple of different avenues and go from there.
We can, uh, we'll, we'll probably make a decision on the, on the survey if I mean another week or two. I could get it started well before this year, so we get a list of twelve, twelve months of data.
Okay, now, do I still need your?
The thing is, that's sure, that's sure, that's a choice, okay, the thing is, remember, if you're gonna go to voters and ask them to vote on something about data, it'd be gunshots.
Oh, absolutely, I'm talking about more than.
The thing is, if, if, I would, I would probably wait and do it, uh, the following year, or we could do it the following year, depending on the data we get back. But it'll take some time to start this process to get the data, what Mike's saying is, you could do a warrant article right now, if you have enough signatures to do one. And that can go in front of the voters, but that warrant article without the correct data would be.
Kind of like gunshot, people be voting on it.
And once you bring it to them and you don't have the right information, it's always harder to bring it again, it seems.
And one other thing too, is that you have three different, um, settings here, I would recommend three different warrant articles, because one can get shot down, whereas the other one might pass, and so the.
Right, some people may say the five hundred dollars is plenty for wartime veterans, maybe they want to do the all veterans, maybe give them three hundred dollars, in some towns.
It says it has to be the same as the regular.
I stand corrected. But the thing is, uh, but they say, oh, they can have a different amount, and, and, but the thing is, maybe they don't want to include all the all veterans, that's true, it's just, it's just.
So you'll want to shoot one down if you're doing it all together, you want to do it separately. And I did get that information from the assessor tonight, and he was going to send that to us.
That was a process, okay, that's what we want to reinforce. You're good, sir.
Okay, I, again, I appreciate you guys taking the time to.
So, I, I agree with Dave's perception though, the thing is, you, you bring it before the voters and get shot down, it's gonna be more difficult the following year, because they'll just remember, oh, we voted against this last year, let's continue to vote against it, I'd rather have your data, if, twelve months, the weight is not, not under.
Now, if it is shot down, does what's already in effect stay?
Yes.
Yeah, unless, unless somebody decides to amend it on the floor and reduce it.
Someone could eliminate the entire warrant, I mean, the entire program we have now.
They could stand up an amended warrant, and then they can take a vote on the amended warrant, so somebody can lower it, somebody can increase it. That's always a chance you take when you bring it up on the floor too, so.
Right, in other words, we have, say the data shows we have fifty more people than I have, well, we're gonna, we're gonna lower it to two hundred and fifty dollars so we can have it spread the wealth among all the veterans.
Okay, that's a, you know, that's a real. It's sort of, when you get there, it's not up to you at that point, once a moderator recognizes somebody, they can amend that on the floor.
But even though the veterans are hitting the, the benefit from the appreciation, the benefit taxes too, so, even though they're hitting the, the long end of the stick today.
But the thing is, I haven't seen you at some of the other reference ceremonies, come on out, you, you, I think you'd be appreciated.
Okay.
I, 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 seriously, like, November eleventh, uh, the school is, does a great job.
Even Don Larson, he has, uh, firmly raised close to ten thousand dollars from non-residential taxes to fund the.
The rates across Dunbar.
Because he's so passionate about that, and it's all done with volunteers, putting bows on, putting them up, taking them down, straightening them up, and it, and he's just as passionate as you are for the benefit, but he doesn't, and, but the other resources.
And they start one up in Maine, they come down through all the states, and our state, they drop the res off, and.
Yeah.
They go for.
So, there is, there is a lot of appreciation in this town, so don't feel like you're not appreciated anymore.
I threw something out, off the wall, I, I write with a motorcycle group, it's a veterans, veterans group, and we help other vets and assist them uh, families that their spouses have deployed, so, you know, we could not find any families that we could help for Christmas and Thanksgiving. We had food baskets, we had turkeys, we had, uh, there's lots of stuff. We ended up doing a toy drive, we did a plumbing drive for, for the, for the shelters, um, so, if you guys know any vets ride or just need some help.
Thing is, we have a welfare director, if something, if someone checks the block as a veteran, now maybe we could just pass his name along.
And they do have a smaller food pantry here at the local church, if you ever.
In contact, I think, Patty Scher might run around here, so.
Yeah, she takes donations for the church, for local, for local residents.
Yeah, but if, if they carry, if they're, if they're hurting and they're also a veteran, that could be a, a double good thing for them.
One of the things we do is, uh, the, the money that we raise on the raffles and, and, uh, fundraising, it stays local. Uh, we're not like the American Legion that has to go all the way to the chain and back down. If a guy comes and says his life's were shut off, we'll have more on that, that afternoon, so.
Anyway, well, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
And that's, I'm done.
You are, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you can get that contact person, I appreciate it.
Okay. Let, let Lee know what you want to do, but I think you, you know the direction we want to go, I want you to.
Share her email with you, and you guys can communicate.
I'm gonna be at Plymouth tomorrow, so.
Sweet.
I'm sure John will bring back.
Okay.
Give you my email.
All right, it sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, up to Woody. Come on, I'm in the hot seat, sir.
It's my chance, we're going to leave in our office.
Is your, yeah? Hey, Woody, should we start? No, 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 yes, maybe, no.
I'll tell you, it's a good thing you sit down.
We just got word about, uh, if we're gonna pay more for tires for recycling, isn't that great? Did you get that note to them yet?
I have a lot of explanations, okay, are you?
This is good. We'll talk off-line about that.
Yes. Uh, okay, so, what my budget this year? A lot of increases. So we're gonna start right at the top and work our way down. So the first is the full-time employee pay.
That's a three percent.
It was, it was the three percent in there.
Okay.
The part-time, um, we can discuss that now. Uh, there's nothing in there, and there's a reason there's nothing in there, on my explanation sheet on the next one, the state of coffees, I have a couple of options there, it says something that, you know, I still think that we need to sit down and really come up with a plan. We're not competitive with our part-time employee pay, pretty much even within our own town, we're not competitive. So we need to do something, um, I have, you know, the turnover is, is crazy down there. One of the problems is the pay, the other problem, I mean, I have guys.
Do you know what high lowest of your pay, is that just option number two?
Well, option number two is what they're actually, actually making.
Okay.
Okay, um, so.
Four of them, it looks like, as part-timers?
Yes, I have four part-timers, um, basically what I did is I went across the board, because when we hire someone, we tell them twenty-four to thirty-two hours. So we have to cover those hours, we have to put a dollar figure to those numbers. Um, on the first one, with that dollar amount, I can juggle the hours around, then I do something that's really hard to do, is to get an exact time that we need coverage, especially for me, if I'm out for an extended period, a driver, if we need a driver for the truck, um.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
It looks like our options here, and option number one and option number two show one oh six, and then ninety-one thousand.
Yes.
I'm looking at your budget this year, was for part-timers seventy-one.
Yep.
And our actual was fifty-eight, so.
We've went quite a spell without an employee.
A single employee.
Employee plus, we were, the hours, uh, we kind of flexed a bunch of hours around, because I wasn't sure how we were gonna make it through the year.
So that would have changed it by the ten or fifteen thousand dollars.
Easily.
That actual does not reflect last week's payroll, because I'm having a problem with my merging, so there is a, um, what you average weekly expenses, is it three, five thousand?
I'd have to go back and look at, so basically, one.
Four part-timers is what your system works best with.
Especially on a Saturday.
Single, full-time worker?
They're single or full-time, which is you.
Which is me.
And those rates there in number two are the three percent?
Yes, yes, those are their actual three percent.
Which is three percent.
Right, and the other thing that, um, you know, it's been a issue right along, the more we change health, the more time I'm out not doing my job, you know, that's bad to say, it's pretty positive, but I'm not doing my job if I'm out training other employees to do their job.
Turnover always takes more, uh, you.
Exactly, so, so I'm falling behind in things that I need to be doing, um, public education and all that.
Do you have a graph of other towns you've checked, or do we need to do that?
No, I can, I can come up with something, you know, as far, you're talking as far as.
Well, Lee's done it for several of the departments before, Lee, do you want to do that with the surrounding towns, like you do that printout for us?
You see where we are compared to other towns.
For transfer station employees, part-time only, and that way we can look at it better, that way.
And now the local government, or the, uh, NHMA is no longer, they put that wage scale report that they typically put out, because it wasn't being consistently updated, they just recently shut it down, but it wouldn't take much to call around the memory.
I would, I would like to call similar-sized towns, like if you went to that report you gave us just a short while back, and pull those light-sized towns.
Yes, I'm responding, I respond all the time.
Twenty-five hundred, you know, Webster, whatever, you know, pick the towns.
Yeah, under that, in that range of population, and I have, I respond regularly to town administrators who are looking for salaries for their different departments, whether it's a road agent position or highway or whatever.
So my thing, if we do that, we, we have done that in several other departments.
Right.
You know, this year and last year, so if we start there, at least we can talk about that again.
Right, and, and I really, I, you know, I feel strongly, we need to, we need to come up with a plan, you know.
But the thing is, though, Woody, I, I always say that, I've learned over my time on the board, that the thing is, uh, you're always gonna have turnover down there, because when someone's, one of the, one of your guys gets, gets off the full-time job with benefits, you know, you want him to take the job.
No, 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 and I get that, but we're, if you look at, and I'm not for anyone else, if you look at what our part-time staff at this office makes versus what my guys make.
Gotcha.
That's, that's a big difference, and, and it's not, I get, we all have different jobs, but my guys are in the, in the crop of it all the time. And the other side, the core, um, you know, we're, we're one of the few departments that deals with every, not every resident, but the majority of the residents on a weekly basis. Yes, there are departments that deal with them on a yearly basis, that's what they're seasonal, seasonal, that kind of thing. We deal with them all the time, right, you know, and I, I think, you know, we gotta come up with something that makes these people want to stay, because when they get hired, they understand it's part-time, but you gotta come up with something that makes them want to stay. You know, when you can go to Target and walk in the door and make fourteen, fifteen, excuse me, fourteen, fifteen hour, and we're starting it. I think the new rate's gonna be thirteen, twenty, sexual size, the new rate, that's kind of, and you're, you look at, you know, the manual labor jobs, I get that, but it's not, you know, you're two different apples there.
Well, let's look at, let's look at these other towns.
Yeah, no, well, yeah.
Well, you know, we'll step right on that when we get a chance, because we have looked at different departments, and we have adjusted some of those pay grades.
You know, and I, like I said, I'm more than willing to sit down and, you know, we gotta come up with something that works for everybody. You know, some of these numbers, these are real numbers.
So which option one, just review option one, where you're going, where you're going.
Basically, what I put in was four employees, sixteen dollars an hour, thirty-two hours a week, um, and being able to flex some of those.
Bring them up, right.
Some of those, flex some of those hours, no three percent.
The thing is, um, can I just, you have one guy down there who's been there a lo- long time, why would you make him the same pay grade as some of the new guys?
No, I don't think he's saying that, that would have been, so the other ones would have been paid just slightly under that, that's his, that's his top rate, he's lowering his rate out from there.
Okay, gotcha, turn down the top rate, then you're working.
Then you tear it backwards like Lena always does for us. I think, uh, I mean.
Is that what you're thinking?
I get it, it's a long term, but there's been a spatter, it has, basically, I have a new staff of employees, I, you know what I mean?
Gotcha, okay.
Start at one level and everybody's the same, right now, and then as you go through and, you know, somebody leaves, the next guy in the door doesn't start at twelve, he might start at fourteen, you know?
Well, that's gonna be, we have a step down process, we can set the one and the others, we can, a percentage.
I think it's something, you know, the other thing, you know, I, I mentioned before, the, the step program, although it has its place, doesn't work. I think it's something, you know, the other thing, you know, I, I mentioned before, the, the step program, although it has its place, doesn't work for us. Because nobody, with the exception of the board, actually, um, grandfathering one employee, nobody typically gets it, and the one employee that was eligible for it.
Stop it.
Well, he was so far beyond it, that he didn't matter anyways, he was above the step already, so, it's kinda, you know, I get it, you gotta have some employee, but. You know, the other thing that I can help you with is I can go to Employment Security, their Labor Statistic website, for the particular job, and it gives you the low, it gives you the high, it gives you the average, just to look at what's going on, and then sometimes, they'll segregate it, so you have non-public and public, you know, so. If you're working for communities, it'll show you that rate between communities, and if you're not in the communities, you're working for, you know, a private, and it's a different, it might be different amount, but I'll see if I can pull that off this way. You know, and the other side, the coin too, is we could, you know, change the amount of hours that they work. Right, I hate to do that.
It'll limit you on how.
It limits me.
Yeah, so I don't think that's a good thing to do, I think, 'cause you can already adjust that hours as you need to, many, you give some more and some a little less, so you can juggle that now, so I think, let's look into the, let's look into how we're paying.
Right, I'll look into that, and then just to take a sixteen-dollar hour for top tier, bringing it to step two would be fifteen, twenty, and then a brand-new ones that are less than six months would be at fourteen, forty-four. So, all those three rates will still be increased.
They bring them back on the tier, so.
It would be increased on even the low end.
What were they again, I'm writing them down.
At sixteen, at the top tier, minus five percent would be fifteen, twenty.
Yeah.
Minus five percent would be fourteen, forty-four.
Okay.
So.
So, if we look at that, Woody, and then we can come back and discuss that section with you again.
Yep, absolutely.
So, I think.
And I'll get the population five thousand or less, those towns, if you can call and get the rates.
Well, you have that, right, yeah?
Yeah, okay.
So, we'll go down to the next table.
So, wasted. Okay, so the overtime for full-time employee, um, we put, I've spoken with Lena about it, she and I talked about it, and figured, should put one week's pay in there and round, and round it up to a thousand, so that's what we did, so there's something in there.
Yeah.
'Cause I mean, it has to be used, it just has to have something in there.
But where we amended the personnel, they had to say no comp time to be carried over, we have to be able to have funding to pay that out. This year, he happened to have a few hours that had to pay him out.
Yeah, which, for all the changes you went through, was fairly minimal.
Right.
I was glad to know that, that was, you set your overtime pretty low.
So, going down to the next line, equipment rental, I decreased that by a hundred. We use fifty, but we are gonna have to rent a, a hiltie or two, a couple times this year, possibly one more. We're actually in the process of building a mower that came out of, that someone dropped off a junk, we got it running, thinking we're gonna be able to put a couple holes in it and be able to mow that and not have to rent a mower, but in case something goes wrong. Yeah, it's, this is just a rider that, you know, it's not the spectacular, so if we beat it up and hit a couple of rocks, it's okay.
Okay.
The training, I left the same, uh, reason being, some of the trainings I did go to, some of the trainings I, I shouldn't have, so, or, I said, I shouldn't have, that had opportunity to go to, and I'd like to have the opportunity, if, you know, some of my guys wanna go to another training, that, um, some of them cost significant amounts, that they would be able to take advantage of these trainings. The next one, the subcontractor line, that one there is a sizable increase. What I did, not knowing the situation we ran into this year, would not have any backup driver, have one, but it wasn't available to do it. We ended up paying out to have the private hauler haul our containers.
Three thousand dollars, probably.
Yes, and actually, there was some others that we ended up negotiating a deal with and was taking care of. Basically, what I was looking at, is I have four weeks vacation.
This is what he did.
I have four weeks vacation, typically, when I leave, I make sure the dumpsters are empty, meaning steel and demo, so that there's a, you know, we don't have to have it hauled when I'm gone, when I'm gone for a one week. When I'm gone for more than one week, there's a potential that the second week that I'm gone, that they will have to be hauled, depending on the time of the year. So, basically, what I did, four weeks, so two hauls, we know right off the bat, that's eight hauls. And then, the potential, depending if I take two weeks or if I take the three-week vacation, the additional four hauls is how I came up with it. Which, they're charging us right now, uh, two hundred dollars a haul, which is cheap, that was negotiated between us and the company that we have our trash contract with. That is on the very low side, you should be looking at three hundred plus a haul, um, without any trouble if you called another contractor, but where we have a contractor, then he's won't, uh, work with us at that amount.
Plus he's getting the review from the district.
Plus he, yeah, plus the tonnage, you know, they haul, they haul with the tonnage, you know, tonnage that we haul with to them. The supply line, we didn't expend as much as I anticipated, so I dropped that one eight hundred. The next line is my maintenance line. I budgeted ten thousand, I spent seventeen, um, using some of that money that we didn't have employees for. Would be looking into my crystal ball for the upcoming year, we're gonna have our regular maintenance, but we've already encountered a couple of problems. One of them is a oil leak on the compactors, it could be a simple fix, could be a few thousand dollar fix.
And then you just fixed one of them?
We fixed the bale of that blue before, no?
Oh, okay. So, anyway, you think that'll go up though?
That could be a sizable fix, I don't know what it's gonna entail, um, you know, watching and keeping an eye on the oil level right now, um, trying to get it figured out what the issue is and why it's leaking. We did have an issue last year with a control box, that's underneath where the motor and hydraulic pump and everything is, it was an issue inside there with some wiring. Could've done some damage to the motor, possibly, we won't know it till you keep running it. So, I'm just kinda trying to plan ahead for some potentially expensive maintenance repairs. The department equipment line, I left at a thousand.
Well, why didn't go up so much this year?
We had some, uh, well, I remember in the beginning of the year, I mentioned to, uh, actually, to Melty, I mentioned to the board that my plan was to buy a different bucket full of skids there and a sweeper, and, like I said, and not, not being staff that having some extra funds, rather than trying, you know, turn the money back, we had the money this year, so we don't have to go to taxpayers and ask for additional funds. The bucket that we got will assist us in decrease.
Is, is capital, or capital boom, is that, a capital boom?
Not capital.
It's capital equipment, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Um, basically, the, we had some damage a couple of years ago with the skid sphere, using the forks, pushed the burn pile up. They should eliminate that, they're a grapple-type bucket, so you actually pinch the material and then put it in the pile, plus it's set up so that it will sift the large material, uh, sift the ash out of the large materials, we should be able to routinely clean the pit while having to shut it down, which was a pretty big inconvenience to the, you know, taxpayers.
Okay.
The next line, telephone, I re, I don't know why I didn't, we didn't spend as much, there are still an outstanding bill, um, I carried it across, I ran the GSI numbers plus the Mark telephone.
It goes up and down.
And, so I just left it the same, it seemed to be okay. The cell phone is another one I don't understand, I use their numbers, so I decreased it a hundred and seven dollars. Ran the numbers that I have currently from them and multiplied it out.
You skipped over uniforms.
Oops, I did. Yes, uniforms, so on the uniforms, we expended twenty-nine hundred seventy-three, as you see, budgeted forty-five, however.
That's what one forty's got.
In this upcoming year, we will have five employees in uniforms.
How many did you have in uniform last year?
Two or three, on and off, we had two, we had three, and we, they were out, and we went back to three, and then down again, so it's kinda flexed around. Basically, across the board, we had consistently two, and then up into three, uh, right now, I have three.
So, the guys are real appreciative of having their own clothes in there.
Yes, yeah, exactly, um, and the other thing that comes out of that line also is their shoes. And I budgeted, um, in here, I budgeted for seven pairs of shoes, as five guys, but if we should have a turnover, obviously, uniforms I will draw, but you still gotta put shoes on.
That's a, that's a good investment, so we don't have a liability in there.
Right.
I have no problem with that.
And the other thing, and then I did mention this to Jeff today, we are gonna be seeing a five percent increase on the uniforms.
Are you still happy with the company?
No.
You wanna change them again?
We might, I've been fighting with them again.
Fighting and really nickel and dime the bills too, so we're saving the towns some money.
I just.
Missing uniforms and all kinds of things.
I put a call into a manager that I was supposed to be working with, I put a call into him today.
I haven't drank back from those. How's your company doing this year?
They're both pretty good, but this one actually, I think.
It's worse?
Is worse and more expensive, and worse.
If you can save some dollars by going back to the other one.
Might, yeah.
Okay. Your, it's, it's, it's your, it's your, your call, we'll, we'll review the contract with you, things are.
Maybe a lot of promises so far, and haven't really been keeping up their end of it.
Understood, but we'll support you on your decision there, you just gotta bring the contract to us, we can get it reviewed.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, the next one is, let's see.
Fuel, fuel cost.
Fuel costs, I left the same, there are some, there's still an outstanding diesel and gas for the month of December, but puts it within like a hundred and fifty dollars of the actual budgeted amount. The ash lab and testing, that's for the burn pile, ash to go to the lab to get tested, I kept that the same, at some point, we're gonna see an increase for them, I don't know when.
And if we don't test it, what happens?
DES could call, right now, here's the situation, DES says, you don't have to test it this year, but they are entitled, if they do an inspection, to view all our records of the material.
What are we looking for?
They're looking for irons.
Okay.
Metals, heavy metals.
Heavy metals.
Which tells them, if they're in a pressure treated, tells them, burned and painted.
Right.
For me, it's more of a, like I said, they said we don't have to test, however, I don't put a long, a lot of trust into what they.
Okay.
I would rather spend it two hundred, fifteen dollars.
Save the headache.
Have a record and say, here you go.
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. Thank you.
The next line is fees and services, to leave that line there, we put it all in it, we don't expend it, we have it. The next one is a big one, is your MSW. We have a, we're in the third year of our contract, what's that stand for?
We're gonna simple solid waste. We should write that out on this.
I don't have enough characters to put the whole thing in there.
It's been simple solid, you put W, yeah, something like that.
Or you could put in parentheses, trash.
Oh, really, that's what it is?
Yeah, it's a.
Yeah, that would make more sense, MSW.
So, for this year, for twenty nineteen, our costs were seventy dollars and two cents a ton.
Or just put solid, make that for, and, uh. What were we paying a ton?
Seventy oh two, this year, our cost is seventy-three, seventeen a ton, which is three dollars and fifteen cents a ton.
How many tons would we do this year?
This year, we delivered nine hundred and twenty-four tons roughly, you know, it's actually nine twenty-four point twenty-four. So, you say, why do you up it? I up to nine seventy-five because our new hauler doesn't always show up at the facility, which indicates some of our decreases, so I have to budget, we're responsible for it if he brings it in, so I have to budget whether he's coming in or whether he's not coming in, I have to have enough of the, the capital's cost. He says he's coming in, he shows up sometimes.
Well, it's on one year and the other year.
What's that?
Whether your hauls it's on this year or next year, you're talking about, right?
No, no, this'll be for this year.
This is the res- residential roadside pickup?
The commercial hauler that we have that comes in.
Is new.
That picks up, so say, Dave, you don't wanna come to transfer, you hire a private hauler to do it, this guy that's blunt, um.
I know what you're talking about, there's a guy that comes around Tuesday.
Right, sometimes he shows up with this stuff, sometimes he doesn't. I don't know, in the last two weeks, he hasn't been in, prior to that, he was in for three weeks, and then prior to that, we hadn't seen him for three weeks, so there's tonnage that we're not, uh, accounting for in this nine twenty-four.
So, it's just sitting there?
No, it's going someplace else.
Okay.
It's not being delivered as to us, however, should he do what the previous hauler did, and the previous hauls before that, and bring it all to us, we have to be able to cover those costs.
Sure, so he's bringing it somewhere, you just don't know where he's bringing it?
He could be taking it to another facility and paying per ton on his own, which he could do, but once again, should he decide to come to Dunbar, because there's a twenty-five dollar yearly fee for him, he decides to come here, we have to cover those costs, so that's.
Do we charge him by the ton too?
Nope, that's the, we used to, it used to be set up that the commercial haul is paid a, a five hundred dollar fee per year, five, six years ago or more, it can argue down to twenty-five dollars.
I think, I think we can address that, yeah, well, what would be your recommendation from you?
Well, here's the thing, I have a lot of issues with the way things are done with our current hauler. I spoke to him and said, look, are you bringing this, your recycler, 'cause what he was doing was bringing our trash, bringing trash, for a couple of weeks, just dumping the trash, taking all the recycling, and then selling it at his place and selling it off, well, that recycling offsets some of the cost traps.
Absolutely.
So, we're not getting it.
Additional labor to cycle that recycling, so.
So, you not knowing whether he's coming in or not coming in, you still have the people in it to do the job, so I fed a couple phone conversations with him and said, look, what are you doing? Are you gonna bring us your material, or are you not gonna bring us your material?
Is it all from Dunbar?
Yeah, I've spot-checked him already, and what I come up with was Dunbar material.
Okay. Twenty-five dollars seems like ridiculous, well.
Twenty-five dollars doesn't cover, it means time to write the forms that he has to fill out.
What was it pre- previously?
It was five hundred, which I think, there's one other thing I wanted to do, is call these other towns and find out what they charge your haulers, some of them, I know one in particular, they charge per ton.
We don't have scales.
We don't have scales.
But if we, if we can find out the towns that come up blanket fee when we call for those hourly fees, then we could do that way.
And that would be commercial hauler?
Yes.
Do they have a flat fee, a lot of these bigger towns, we gotta drive it by the ton?
Right, 'cause they have scales on, you know, that's a pretty steep request.
And do we have to take, uh, that stuff because it comes from Dunbar, or do, can we reject it all altogether?
Because it's produced in Dunbar, this is kind of a real slippery slope.
'Cause a lot of commercial hauls go right to Rochester or something.
Right, they, and that's, they figure that in in their cost, so say you have a tonne of dumpster, that's figured into their cost, when they pick up your trash, their disposal, or their tip fee, that they're paying is figured into what they're charging you for the dumpster and for your monthly fee, it's all figured in there.
So, they're almost getting free to dump it with us, essentially, twenty-five dollars is nothing, so we're free dumping ground, and they make all that, they making a huge profit over this.
Yeah, you gotta re- realize it is a pretty reasonable service. Yeah, you gotta re- realize it is a pretty reasonable service. I think it's fifteen dollars a month or something that they guys pick up for. I don't know what the new guy charges. I know it used to be.
Well, that was the old guy, he's retired now, so this is new one, I don't know what he charges.
I don't know what they charge.
I have no idea what they're charging.
I see trash out at the same houses, so they can't be charged too much. There's been a lot of things on social media about it, good or bad?
Bad.
I don't see as many along the run on Tuesday.
I don't know.
So we should, we should look at addressing that when we do that other dollar figure for the employees.
If you can get us any information. That could be a good source of revenue for you, and offset some of your expenses.
We have, we have one.
Yeah, we have one haul.
That would be five hundred a year.
If we earn five hundred, but then you said, five hundred a year is still not a bad.
Right, and what if we cover, is pretty much cover your, it'll time to a second person, when he's, when they're dumping, they're doing a spot check. It takes two people.
Right, and I think, I think.
It covers a little bit of that.
They can plonk, they can plonk the, 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 true, true putty, might say.
Yeah, he goes to the overhead, the overhead door, but also cover some of, you know, the clerical time, you know. Lean's gotta check their insurance, they, cause they gotta show proof of insurance, all this stuff that she does in her office or her staff.
And also help cover your guys that are there when they're not coming, cause they decide not to.
Right. You know, it's a small piece that it would cover, but it's something, it's something more.
Right, well, well, just do this research, just do a little research.
Five, six years ago, there were local residents that were doing it on the side, and they were arguing that the five hundred dollar fee was too much of a burden on them.
We don't see that anymore, so. No, and I think as far as I'm concerned, the fact that tip dumping in our, our facility for zero, for essentially zero cost.
Five hundred is cheap.
It's exactly.
Because I think if you figured out their tonnage, you know, there's a, there'd be a way to do it, to figure out what tonnage they bring in. And then if you even charge them our tip rate that we're paying, which is less trucking, because we're doing the trucking, but it's still a cost.
They're making money.
It's still cheaper for them.
Yeah, and so we're a convenience for them.
Yes, if we, if we have, we look into the amounts of other traffic.
Okay.
Address that at the same time.
Okay. Continue on, say again? Yeah.
Go ahead. So the next one.
Yeah, right.
Is your C and D. So there's, on the MSW, there's now. You've got, you've gone up fifty tons, which isn't a large amount, and the seventy-three seventeen is the exact calculation. When I'm looking at seventy-one, three, four, one. Seventy, seventy-three seventeen.
Is the contract.
Is our contracted price for twenty-two.
I know, and you multiply it by nine hundred and seventy-five tons.
Yes.
And that amount comes to seventy-one, three, four, one.
Yes.
So there's not much to do on that line.
No, and the next line is your construction and demolition.
Would you kept it at about what you're at, so that should be.
No, no. It went up a little bit, but in, I noticed in that line, there was something charged to that, that should have been charged to my, the, the line, the next line now. Uh, basically, what I did, we delivered, uh, a hundred and fifty-six point two tons of demo. However, there's one load that didn't go out, that's would have been on last year's, that put us at about a hundred and sixty plus ton. And having seen that as being, usually I put a buffer in there, because you don't know what people are gonna do for demo. You know, normally a hundred and sixty ton has been.
That also generates a ton.
Right, 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 cause we've charged for, that's, you know, certain amounts we charge for. Um, so I bumped it, one sixty. Usually I would, one fifty is one fifty-two, one fifty-three is all we deliver, and one sixty give us a buffer, cause we didn't know, you don't know. How many people are gonna do little pushes.
Right, it's a best estimate.
So having been at a hundred and sixty ton this year, or just over it, I bumped it up to one seventy-five. The new rate for demo is seventy-seven ninety-three, which is a three dollar and thirty-six per ton increase. Giving you that number of.
Thirteen, six, three.
Thirteen, six, three, eight.
Okay.
So.
But that, that's good.
Okay. So the next line. Is your hazardous waste collection. In that line consists of hazardous waste data ball. It also consists of your free on units, which this year, we did way more units than I ever anticipated. We did two hundred and, uh, like two hundred and thirty units, two hundred and twenty units this year. Normally, we are under two hundred. Just shows you that, you know, the population is jumped up a little bit in this town. Um. It also covers, like I said, the hazardous waste table, but it covers tires. Uh, we shipped out roughly four hundred and fifty tires this year. And also in that same line, it takes into the glass. Glass is about. About seventy, seventy-five ton we, we ship out, and it costs a thirty-five dollars a ton. Some of that shifted towards demo, when they wouldn't take, like toilets and sinks and window glass in that glass anymore. Shifted to demo, which could be part of the reason we had, is part of the reason that we had to jump up in, in demo. Where before, it would have been considered glassing. I am working on that line to try and, with the glass, to come up with something different.
I tried to push it last year, but I couldn't push it. You have two thousand in there for paper on your hazardous waste?
Yeah, cause we don't technically have a line to pull it out of. Um, but I'll get right to that as I, once, the next couple of things down. In that line as well, covers your electronics, it covers bulbs, uh, propane tanks, fire extinguishers. Anything that we get, we have to deal with and ship out as a hazardous waste. In that line, this year, unfortunately, we had to pay for two loads of paper to be shipped out. Actually, it was a load and a half of paper to be shipped out.
What do we get for ton for that? What do you have to pay for that?
This last time, it cost me fourteen hundred dollars for a load, was five hundred dollars for trucking. And it was, uh, forty dollars, I believe it was forty dollars a ton for the material. It's getting close to the point of it going straight to trash and being the same dollar amount.
Now, I understand you're going up some, but you're up forty-three hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
The, yeah, when I, I still look back at this line, there's still some material that's not in that line, someplace in there, we, I ran the numbers. We did have an increase, uh, there's an increase in the cost, uh, what we used to pay to have our free on units pumped. That went up three dollars a unit. The electronics went up a little bit, your propane tanks, uh, those went up.
Do you think there's a happy medium there, if we have a couple of grand that we're covering? Look at your actual.
Right, well, the only concern I have, I mean, I'd be willing to try and split something in there, is. The only reason, like I said, I'd be willing to do something because on the horizon, what it looks like through my crystal ball, once again. I've been talking with some vendors, the paper market looks like it's gonna change in the very near future.
For the benefit of us?
For the benefit. You know, every.
Six.
Six years, seven years, whatever, we went through this a few years back, I'll say six years ago, I don't know exactly, well, doing a bunch of research on it. We went through a spell where paper, it'll bottom out, you had to pay for it. We're going through that spell right now.
I'm thinking, Woody, if we went to seventeen-five maybe on that.
Yeah.
It'd take us down fifteen hundred, but it's still, cause I'm going up a little bit because you spent sixteen thousand in that budget this year, so.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm willing to, you know, we can flex it out a little bit.
Down a little bit, we went to seventeen-five on that. It's just, it just seems like, uh, I agree with Dave, we went a lot, I don't mind matching the sixteen hundred, but you went up a little too much too fast there. I think it's, uh, I think it's again, you can't control every cost, you can't, you can't control your costs.
Some of this isn't a, isn't, you know, it's, it's not a given, you got flexing all through your year, so. Right. You know, and like, you could always have a decrease in one.
Right.
Like I said, on the horizon, there's potential that a mill is gonna be opening up. That is gonna be craving the material that municipalities are producing, you know, clean, good sorted material. When it's gonna happen next year, I don't know.
That question, uh, you have to sort, I, I know your paper sorted between corrugated and non-corrugated, is that still a problem, not to put it all together?
Well, corrugated, we get paid for.
Right.
We get paid for the.
Corrugated, you have the other paper, you know?
Paper, regular paper, we're not right now.
Okay.
Uh, but like I said, on the, uh, through my crystal ball.
It could be a potential.
There's a potential that it's gonna start paying something. Here's the other side of the coin, is that when you look at your trash number. You know, that's seventy, seventy-three seventeen, even if you're paying, we'll say with the trucking, you're paying, let's just call it fifty-five dollars a ton.
Okay.
You're still saving, uh.
From general trash, seventy dollars, but yeah.
You're still saving the twenty.
I'll get my calculator off. Well, twenty bucks.
Whatever it is, a ton off from that material, even though you're paying to get rid of it.
And that's, that's, it keeps people wanna recycle happy too, and so it's, it's win-win.
It's a win-win, and like I said, it's not always gonna be like, we're in a.
A lot.
A, a long right now, and it happens. Fortunately for us, we've been able to store for a while and ship out as needed on the paper. Um.
All right. Gentlemen, is that, that completes your budget?
Yeah, other than the last one, the NRA, that, they, that's figured, our dues are figured off, a population. I ran the number that should have been last year, and it went up, so I figured I'd just go up four bucks, cause I don't know what they're gonna come up with.
I think that's, you did fine there. I have a rough with that.
You know, I tried to give you the budget that's reality. Um, these numbers seem high, but I'm gonna tell you what's coming after our contract, the potential. And we have a five-year contract, we're in year three.
Yep.
So in twenty twenty-two, let's see, twenty twenty-two, the rumors and the potential that's out there for trash numbers. Would be willing to double what we're paying right now.
Okay. Can I, um, just review one more thing with you, Woody, before we go? Looking at your part-time, is that the only thing I've got?
Yeah.
Hollow spotted to try and get a total of a budget. Just if we did a dollar an hour, let's say, increase, not start at the sixteen to down, that'd be, uh, each person there in the part-time versus thirty-two hours a week that we're basing it on. Times four of them, be a hundred and twenty-eight. Hundred and twenty-eight times fifty-two would be a sixty-six hundred and fifty-six dollar increase. Would I be adding it to the seventy-one thousand or the fifty-eight thousand, if I was looking at that, if I was just trying?
What I would do, how, how I did it, uh, so you're saying instead of sixteen an hour, fifty an hour, correct?
No, I just took their actual pay that they have now. And added a dollar an hour to it.
Okay, so what I.
So I just did that, and I did fly your route, you have thirty-two hours a week for four employees, that's a hundred and twenty-eight hours times fifty-two weeks. Is a sixty-six, fifty-six increase on that line. But I don't know whether I'm going on your budget this year or on your actual this year.
So what I did, and maybe this, cause you added a, a dollar an hour to what they're actually making, correct?
That's what I.
So that goes down online, goes down to number two. This is what they're actually making here.
Right, so I, I'm just saying.
This, this is their, what is the total.
You took four dollars times fifty-two, times thirty-two.
You take thirty-two tons four.
Right.
Cause it's a dollar an hour.
You added it to this.
Hundred and twenty-eight times fifty-two is sixty-six, fifty-six.
This is, this is the actual for this.
Yeah, I know.
So you would add it to this. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, but.
So your four people are gonna be at ninety-one this year regardless?
At least.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm budgeting. So I mean, the other side of the coin is.
So your budget this year was seventy-one, you spent fifty-eight, and you're saying right now, if we don't increase anybody's pay, it's ninety-one.
Longer, this is with the three percent.
With the three, uh, with.
See now, this is what I would do, and I'm just throwing this out there. If you were gonna increase this.
I'm just, I'm just going off the top of my head, seeing.
Right, but I'm just saying, if you were gonna increase their pay a dollar, I wouldn't do the three percent, because you're doing a dollar plus three percent.
Right.
You see what I'm saying? Which actually is, you're getting close to.
That's why it's still not three percent on the top.
Right, that's why I did no three percent.
I know, but the three percent's down already.
Hmm, not really. I mean, it's, it's.
Well, you voted the pay raise in.
Right, so I would adjust, the other side of the coin is, uh.
Instead of a dollar, it'd be three percent less, ninety-seven cents versus a dollar.
Right, exactly. As opposed to, so you're not double raising, you know what I'm saying? Uh, and then, like I said, the other side of the coin is, I can go back and, you know, we can chop some hours and.
Well, you, you did it so you could, I mean, you're gonna naturally chop hours anyways, and the thing is, you did it so you, you didn't want it to be cut short.
Yeah, I have to bring something into work, we have to have a start point, and if, if for instance, I have to go, all right, we're gonna change and, you know, instead of you realizing. And I'm just throwing this out there, how many, doing thirty-two a week, how many you gotta do thirty-two, and a couple you're gonna do, you know, twenty-eight or something. You know, that's, we might have.
Or rotate around.
Or rotate around. Right now, I'm giving them, I got so much stuff going on right now, whatever they have all there.
Thirty-two.
And I will tell you, this is a problem with the pay. These other guys have taken all these part-time jobs. For, because of pay. I mean, everybody knows, everything boils down to, regardless of who tells you, all boils down to.
We did kinda talk, this department's always gonna have some of those.
But you're always gonna have a flip in it.
Right.
But when you're, when you're here, and the general public's here, you know, that's, makes this flip wanna be a little more all the time.
You don't have a benefit package like full-time employees.
No, exactly, if, you know, if someone goes a full-time, that's, you know, regardless. Uh.
So minimum, we're at ninety-one, three, nine, five in this call.
That's if they, you know, we're doing it twenty, at thirty-two hour, like I said, we better adjust the hours so that instead of everybody working thirty-two, we drop it back. Or rotate it more, however it's gonna come along.
You're gonna be equitable, we, and rotate it around.
So the three percent calculates to about forty to forty-four cents for each of the current pay that he has noted.
Right. So in other words, like if you were trying to give them a dollar raise, you'd give them sixty-four cents, sixty-six cents, yeah. Tom, you're gonna bring it up later on too, right?
Yeah, we'll just look at that when we do the budget.
Okay, Woody, you have another alternative tool, he's been working on it. I don't think it's ready for the prime time yet, you're not ready for that.
No, no, not, not doing it.
Okay.
Okay, like I said, you know what, I'm going on, you know, we'll sit down and ask this out some more, cause I, you know, I think we need to do something. We need to come up with a plan.
So once we, once we get the information, then we can make a, a more educated decision.
Yeah.
Cause I did, one time in my three years, we had looked at labor, uh, um, the transfer station levels for surrounding towns, and I thought we were pretty equal at that time. But that was a while back, so I'd like to check that again, because obviously, the economy's changed, yeah.
Okay, I mean, and, and the other side of the coin is, is we're not only being, things are bo- everybody knows things are booming out there. We're not only being competitive with the prices like that, but towns.
And being forced to pay more anyways.
They're competing amongst themselves.
Yeah, right. Seen a lot of ads on, in the mission.
They're competing amongst them, I, you know.
Where I'm, where I'm coming from is, I'm thinking that three percent annual raise was a fairly decent raise compared to what they've been used to if they've been here a while.
Right, which like last year was what, two percent?
Yeah, before that was what, point seven seven?
Point seven, point.
Eight or something like that. So, and I, so that's why, I don't wanna, I don't wanna double step it right away if we don't, especially if we don't have the information to back it up.
Right, and the other side of the coin too, that you have to look at, you know, and I get it, you know, there was a year you had a point seven, a point eight, but you also have to look at. The cost of living, didn't care about point eight, a point seven, it kept doing this, and these guys are still kinda, it's progressed. I will tell you, in my time being here, it has progressed where they used to start at nine, and that was, oof, that was right there.
I have to give a kudos to Bob, Bob, uh, basically, uh, picked up three, he's, he's calculated two point nine, and came up with exactly three percent.
Yeah.
And was, he was fine on with the pay raise this year. Kudos to Bob. Okay, um, any further questions on the budget? I think we got some homework to do, Lean, if you need to finish it, we can finish it up.
Yeah.
With, uh, what he's saying, you see, so.
I'll hope as much as I can.
Do you wanna put a plug in, a number, one he's presented here, just so you have a. Do you wanna put a plug in, a number when he's presented here, just so you have a. So we adjusted the, the progress base down to seventy-five. So that came from one-eighty-five, eight-nineteen, and then if we're adding the option two.
Option two for time being.
Ninety-one-three-nine-five, we have a total budget of two-seventy-seven, two-fourteen.
Okay. Now, changed gears completely, decided to stay in here. When can we, when can we sell your truck?
Soon as we get the letters off it.
Okay, what does he think, you take a hairdryer, is he gonna take off a hairdryer, you think?
Actually, I was actually gonna ask the board's permission if I could bring it to my house and put it in my heated garage to start the process up.
In fact, in fact, I'll get a consensus first, gentlemen, you have any problems with that? You got it.
They don't have a problem doing it, it's just.
A hairdryer works good.
Yes, we actually have one of the employees offered his heat gun.
Okay, he can.
I have, I offer my hairdryer, don't have a heat gun, I don't have a hair.
Okay, great, I think is, I'd like to make a suggestion that, uh, once we get a, get a description for it, miles and all, get some maintenance stuff done on it.
I have a whole, a whole folder with all the.
Let's come up with a proposed price, that we will bless or not, I think, maybe next meeting we can bless or not, without, and then in the description, we wanna put all the maintenance things we've done on it. Then I wanna park it up here, so people can see it, and come in and give their bid right to Lean. Lean, what do you think, gentlemen?
I'm just, that is a proposed idea.
Still good.
Still good.
Lean, you had, um, brought the two-seventy-seven, two-one-four. And did you change any other number?
We, uh, we only changed the second of the bottom line. Has this, has this way, we dropped it to seventeen-five, is that what you proposed? So that adjusted number came to one-eighty-five, eight-nineteen, plus the part-time one.
I like that. We'll talk about it, but I'd like to put it back into your line. That's my goal. My goal, but I think I gotta get to other goals.
No, with this budget.
I may need it.
I'm still doing the math.
So I think, so I think the difference is gonna be the price of the truck in the world set.
Yeah, you get a couple of years. The guys, they're on the rates.
Is that non-public or?
No, oh, yes, yes, I, um, you can, please start the links quietly tomorrow, or when you see.
Oh, okay.
Thing is, um, I know which way you wanna head on that, I think you're gonna have to support it.
I think he's asking, do you wanna go into non-public to talk about?
Well, I thought that's all, oh, yeah.
Is it in the basket?
It was in the basket, I think is, I think is, I know.
We're just doing it later today.
Okay, well, I think is, I know where he wants to go with it, I don't know if there's any further discussion needed, do we need to discuss this at all, gentlemen?
Well, I just think that we already have a driver, commercial driver, signed up and paid itself.
So there's no need here at this point. Okay, then it goes in the circle, next circle of files, goes in the manila photo file for potential in the future.
Now, what I would do is, I would just have Lean call him or email him and let him know that we have.
On courtesy.
We already have a commercial contractor.
I just, I just, you know, Lean and I discussed this to it, cause we've gotten three applications, I think. She and I talked about, I just think that we need to put it into.
Well, give, give the, give the applicant at least a direction.
Right, and give us a direction as well from the board to say, okay, this is where, you know, put the brakes on right now, this is the way it's gonna be.
And because of this, we're gonna put the brakes on it.
Well, the other side of the coin is that, when it comes from the board, it has a lot more weight than it comes from.
But we rely on you too, you wanna have your back.
But you should have to say, this is the way we're gonna do it right now, and end the discussion, there's no discussion.
So we're gonna keep that in the, the manila folder as potential for the future, not, not needed this time, gentlemen, we consensus there? Courtesy, I think it's courtesy.
Exactly.
Anything else, we talked truck, overall, I think when I go down to transfer stations, it always looks great, and the guy's been working hard.
We just did the last, I'm gonna give you a quick number real quick. Saturday of Christmas. And the Tuesday, before New Year's. Uh, basically, we produced, I know this don't sound like a lot, but when you look at the number, three bales of cardboard, which you typically don't do.
I've seen the cardboard all over.
And then two bales of paper, in the two days, we did just under eighteen tons of trash in two days. So it was, it was game.
As a courtesy to you, we're gonna heads up from the solo panel people, full cruise speed this week and this week.
So, just give me a quickie on that. They were in today.
Okay.
Um, we're supposed to be, be there tomorrow morning and let them in. I have coverage, so whatever hours, you know, I'm only gonna be part day on Saturday to make up some of these, get rid of some of these hours, so I don't have to be all the time, I have, staff and I've already made the arrangements and everybody's covered. They're supposed to come back tomorrow, they were pulling wires again today.
They said a week for us, and that's when, we got our email today, saying they should be done in a, done in a week.
By next week.
So, across my fingers, I just wanna make sure you were aware of that.
I'm just smiling because it was supposed to be done second week until last, you're smiling. On the side of the coin, uh, the panels haven't cleared themselves in this last snow.
Oh, the ice.
They've dropped about that far, that's.
They'll be, they'll be gone by tomorrow, that's what I'm bringing tomorrow morning. I'm hoping.
Is it because of that on?
No, that storm has held on even the roofs everywhere.
This, this.
This was about.
It's cold enough at night to melt quite afternoon day.
I spent, uh, the better part of three hours today chiseling ice off from dumpsters so we could haul them down the road. You know, it was, in some spots, it was over an inch and a half.
And they are ticketing people down the road.
Yeah, we're a prime target because we're a commercial vehicle. So, you know, I make sure that it's, I mean, I don't wanna, wouldn't wanna go within the Vikings' time or anyone else's.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But you're saying that ice was brutal, the storm was.
Okay, and we get more probably, I think it's Saturday, Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday night they say it rains, which.
So we're still gonna have a store issue even though they done, when they've done the wiring? The stone you have on the property.
Yeah, that in their final grade, I mean, and the fact that they were gonna dig that bank, you know, I have, it is tight for me to get in on that truck and that bank and, and to get past that panel.
What we'll do is the night that they come in to speak with us, Ron will have you in, and go through all those.
I mean, some of all people would be down to the spring at this.
And that's fun, but, and I do think, you know, at some point, I'm not a, you know, trying to do it with a, it would be Eddie, but trying to do it with the skid steer and their excavator, at some point, I really think we'd have Jeff come in and just kinda do a quick final grade with his dozer to get the water to shed away.
Well, we can do that, but I wanna make sure they finish up their part.
Hey, I can dump a couple loads of dirt, you know, gravel, spread them out so that we can, cause now, the way it comes, we're gonna have to come in, go to the right of those panels, which is soft in here now, and go out with the truck and then back in, so we need to put some kind of base there. There's probably not much loom and crap on top of it, uh, but they get a base and we can push this, you know, we're pushing the snow over that bank and I don't need that machine getting buried, you know, and I won't go in the tech if he doesn't want the skid steer.
Well, I think it's, we'll invite you when they, they're gonna be coming in probably two, two weeks ahead.
Yes, yeah, if we can just give me a heads up, send, you know, to send me a, like you mentioned, did you send me something that said hey?
But I wanna make sure you're, you're right in the situation, you're on the same sheet as we are.
Right, I think we all should be.
And, but he's, he's promised that it's gonna meet our expectations, and, uh, and we have no, we made, we're supposed to get, it's all on them, not us. And he was very, he read the letter to the, the record, and I, he was very respectful and sort of emailed to us, to the data point. So I thought it was, I thought it was good and well, but I think is, the proof is in the pudding.
Right, and I know there's some things that I spoke to David about that, um, looking at, a couple ideas that had been mentioned, I've been talking to him since then. But initially, we talked about possibly putting some kind of screen outside, like a monitor screen, so that the general public can come up to the building and see.
Oh, see what's going on.
See what's going on.
From a PR point of view.
Right, and then there would be, he said, you'll have one, we could do something where there'd be one in my office where we can monitor showtime and they have extended, but the general public would be able to, hey, I wanna see what this is doing, but I gotta tell you, we take a lot of heat for those whole panels. People, for the most part, wanna do the right thing, they were not upset that they were there, they were upset that they didn't have a say. That's what we got, that was the most of.
They did have a say, they just didn't show up.
Right, exactly, but you know how it is when, you know, they come in, they're like, oh geez, I'm glad they're doing the right thing, but man, how come I didn't get to say? How come we, how did we pay for this? I tried to explain to them, look, you did vote on it, however, you know, this, this is paying this instead of paying this. Tried to explain it to them, but this, you know, we took some heat over, it's not a big deal, but, you know, maybe in the future, we just do something a little different.
Yeah, we knew we were up there, so he.
But I will say, for the most part, most of the inquiries, when you weed out some of that, where, hey, is it all in I get? Are we making any power?
Even, even kind of like, like a lever for me to go backwards.
Something.
Okay, don't come to the public here and then I come home.
No, the thing is, you're always gonna have people unhappy.
But if I don't tell you the bad, I always tell you the good, you never know about the bad.
Absolutely, we won't, we won't shoot you today, maybe tomorrow.
You hear the same thing with Jeff, you know, he has his hearing in, in the spring. And then the next thing you know, we're hearing about it, like a men's coffee, when ain't gonna do this wrong, but they don't come to the hearing.
You know what the biggest problem is? There's a road, there's a camp down the street here, we just put a speed, a speed limit sideline, did I say where it was?
You put a speed limit sign?
Hey, uh, you gotta have some humor here, you're smiling there, my friend.
The, uh, we wanna give our thanks as a board for you being so open about your budget and also uh, sending us emails as you've been going along, it keeps the board apprised of what's going down there. You are one of the biggest labor forces in our town, although a lot of it is part-time.
Right.
It keeps us really on top of what's going on down there, we appreciate your communication with us.
Yeah, those emails have been helpful when you're not in state.
Right.
Those are spot on, so, cause we, we get a, we don't have to talk to you, you basically tell us what's going on. The same thing is happening with the building and planning, they give us a monthly report of the ongoing's and the high issues, and so, uh, we appreciate that.
Just, you know, that way if somebody gives us, you know, asks us a question about your department, we can most likely answer without calling you or asking you, cause you've given us heads up from house, thanks for going.
One thing I would, I've asked previous boards, um, I would like to try and get a recycling committee together again, we haven't had one for many years, it was disband for multiple, multiple reasons. There are people out there that are interested in pushing the recycling along, I think we need to somehow reach out to them. They actually put something together, I guess, if he wants to be.
No, I'm chuckling, just, it's gonna be all the white here people here.
I think there's some younger that would be, you know, strike to do something, I know a lot of people busy, but it's not something.
The only thing I was worried about is, the recycling market says to me, or was last year going down, so where you're recycling more things, putting more employee hours out there to not get any financial benefit for the town, it's gonna be a tough sell, I think.
But you, like I said, you have to look, the other side of the coin is what you throw away, there's a cost, and even if you pay, as long as it doesn't meet that threshold of your current rate, and you're below that threshold, even though it's a cost, it's still a savings. I know it's tough to, I have a tough time wrapping my brain around it, but it's, it is a cost savings. Uh, and you have to look at it that way, and the other side of the coin, you know, to push the program a little more harder to the school, uh, they're one of, they're our biggest producer. You know, if we can push them a little harder, the future's in that school. You know, you have kindergarten through, was it sixth grade now? They're the ones.
They have a damn trash program.
I mean, there's, there's programs that we can bring into, I just, in my current state, and not, not being, I don't have the time. But if I had a group that's willing to do something that can, you know, back me up and help me in some of this, you know, we can improve, you know, the public part of it, you know, maybe get a little more education out to the public on, hey, this is how it needs to be sorted, this is, maybe their job faster when they come in, so.
Even on Hot Topics, if there's a, if there's an issue that you see as a problem, when I, when I, we were throwing too much class into mainstream trash, for example, uh, we can put some stuff in Hot Topics, people read that, read our, our Hot Topics, cause what's, what's nice about our Hot Topics is changes all the time, it's when it gets stale, people don't come back to it at all.
Right, and then, and the other thing too is, you know, we have a website. At some point, we'd like to be able to, you know, my section, boost it up, but there's a lot of knowledge that you can throw in here, that's just little tidbits that put lights off in people's heads and, you know, hey, this does make sense.
I need some free help to help you do that stuff.
You know, somebody that's not looking to put an axe in your back, but the more, you know, wanna push the program forward rather than push it backwards, kind of thing.
Yep, great, great, all right, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
I look forward to your, your truck, taking it home and fixing it up for us, and then, I wanna, I put a coat of wax on it, make it look pretty.
I wax my own, it's like.
Well, we wanted a top dollar for you.
There you go.
Okay, take care, Woody, thanks again. Okay, uh, non-public, I'm not gonna, there's no non-public here, but I'm gonna send it out to public comment, Leo. And for those non-public residents, if you like my comment about roads.
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you, Dave, Bob, anything else? Uh, Tom, it's right, I'd like to hear a motion, cause I'm not gonna say anything.
I made a motion to adjourn at nine oh seven.
Thank you, gentlemen. All in favor?